The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Hello, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Waverham City Council held on council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, June 13th. First thing that we're going to do is we're going to have approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning priorities meeting held May 24th, 2022, if you would please.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. There's no additions from administration tonight.
Members of council, seeing none, we're moving forward. Public hearings and notice, there are none. Delegations, proclamations, and petitions, there are none at this time, but in announcements, I will talk to you about one proclamation that was made in mayor's chambers here earlier this week. Reports to standing committees, please commission. Mr. Van Betje, if you would please.
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of the Waverham Police Commission was held in administrative boardroom 4:00 PM Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Additions to the agenda were the year-to-date report for budget, introduction of member Chief Blunden introduced Constable Mary Lee McSherry and Oakley, the new police canine. Constable McSherry provided information on Oakley and vies that Oakley has been fully trained on the identification of various drugs and will be a great asset to the Waverham Police Service. In correspondence, CAPG nominations committee has put out invitation for nominations to CAPG Board of Directors for the term of 2022 to 2024 with one vacancy in Saskatchewan. Nominations must be submitted to CAPG by June 15th, 2022, with the election to be held at the CAPG Annual General Meeting on a 2:00 PM Eastern September 1st, 2022 via Zoom. The board took this as information. A CAPG call for resolutions is currently open. The deadline for submission is June 2015, 2022. Once all resolutions are submitted, the CAPG Resolutions Committee will review and provide all members with the resolutions by August 2nd, 2022, and the resolutions will be voted on at the Annual General Meeting September 1st, 2022. The board took this as information. Chief Blunden presented the mayor's report for April 2022, which included the Waverham Police Service seven-year average charges for April, mental health assist calls year-to-date, community engagement for April, overtime reports for April, year-to-date, and six-year average and monthly overtime report for April. It was noted that mental health calls are up to 25 from 11 in March and 7 in February. Police Week is this week and was recognized at the legislature. Overtime is above average to date due to a lot of training. However, the year-to-date overtime is the second lowest over the last six years, with the last three years seeing half the money spent on overtime compared to previous. The accounts payable report for April was provided to the board. Chief Blunden provided year-to-date budget report. The report shows the budget target revenues are $702,999 and are currently at $234,043 or 33 and 1/3%. Expenses are budgeted at $4,075,865 and are currently at $1,358,45 or 33 and 1/3% of the actual net operating budget. Year-to-date is $104,030 to the positive. These reports were moved and accepted as reported. In unfinished business, Chief Blunden provided the 2021 Business Plan with some notes and recommendations for changes to the plan. Some of the comments and recommendations on actions and measurables were under the In new business, Chief Blunden provided a report on the final budget overage for 2021. A letter requests for CAPG to the Waverham Police Service to participate in proposed project of action research to engage the participants in building tools arising from identified issues. This information was taken as, the board took this as information. Chairman McCormick stated he attended a meeting hosted by the Rotary Club and they want to hold a treaty for recognition day. This also was taken as information. Moved by Krista Yubek and seconded by Councillor Corrigan that at 5:26, the Waverham Police Commission moved into closed, into in-camera. At 5:38 PM, the board moved out of closed camera and the meeting was adjourned.
We'll take that as received. Questions? Okay, will be note that it is received. Consent agenda, can we have a motion? It is for the fire department report, the taxation collection report, and public works report for May. Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. I'm prepared to make a motion out there. It's on the consent agenda. Be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, unanimously. Those will be on the city website. Motion, council payable, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. I would move that the purchases in the amount of $4,489,872 and 31 cents from May 20th to June 9th, 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, unanimously. Provincial Disaster Assistance Program, city manager?
Thanks, your worship. So this report goes through a request for provincial disaster assistance from the province of Saskatchewan. So PDAP, which is Provincial Disaster Assistance Program, helps residents, small businesses, agricultural operations, First Nations, nonprofit organizations, and communities recover from natural disasters, including flooding, tornadoes, plowwinds, and other disasters caused by severe weather. PDAP may help cover the cost of uninsurable essential losses, cleanup, repairs, and temporary relocation. So the provincial program administers federal funds to help people after uninsurable damage from natural disasters. In order to be eligible for assistance from a disaster, a local authority must apply in a way of approval. So that's what we're doing tonight. So all we are aware, and it's raining again tonight, that on May 13th, 2012, the city of Waverham experienced a heavy rainfall, which we had 67.5 millimeters within that timeframe on that day, as per Environment Canada. City of Waverham is aware that some private property owners have incurred damage within their basements due to water and sewer. As a result, the city has applied to the government of Saskatchewan as an eligible assistance area under PDAP. So there's no financial responsibility for the city to designate under the program for private damages. In order to submit an application and to have the municipality designate as an eligible assistance area, the province of Saskatchewan requires resolution. Stay in the city of council is in support of the application. The application is then provided to the Ministry of Corrections, Policing, and Public Safety for approval. PDAP is not intended to compete with private insurers or provide full compensation to those who incur substantial loss or damage to their property. Assistance may be provided to pre-disaster ignition only. So if approved, the province of Saskatchewan would provide the city of Waverham with an information package, including the application forms. The applications forms would be available to Waverham residents on the city of Waverham website and located here at city hall. Residents would be given information on how to apply through news and releases, social media, and on through our city website. So I also included for council additional information on the program. It's pretty in-depth what they have on their provincial websites to go through that. So I recommend that the city council provide the province of Saskatchewan, Ministry of Corrections, Policing, and Public Safety the required resolution for the provincial disaster assistance program application.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, all move that the city of Waverham apply the Ministry of Corrections, Policing, and Public Safety to be designated an eligible assistance area under the provincial disaster assistance program, which provides financial assistance for restoring essential services and property as a result of substantial damages caused by a heavy rain event on the date of May 13th, 2022.
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Yes.
Thanks, your worship. City manager, you refer to this in your report a number of times as an application. So once this hits the province, is this a pass fail for us, or is it simply, I guess, for lack of a better word, approved just based on our submission?
Yeah, with the 67.5 millimeters of rain on the May 13th, I have talked to the province, and it is an eligible application for that. There's a certain threshold, so it's usually a certain area that they would tell us to their province. For this one, I actually had to ask for a request because of the amount of rain we had during that. All they required then for us was to provide application, which the application has been submitted by the city. I provided that a few weeks ago, and then all it is, is the resolution from us. And then I await their approval, and then we'll make sure that we promote this to our public and make sure people are aware how to register and how to get the application form in to the province.
Great. Thank you for your work on this.
Go ahead, Mr. Van Betje.
Yeah, just make note, Matthew, that I think it's six months that the residents have from the date that the approval accepted, so just so residents understand that there is a time limit on this and that they have to be within that window.
Yeah, so I'll go through a little more. Thank you, councillor Van Betje, for bringing that up. So it's going to be dictated that they'll have to everything in by November 13th. So it's not six months from today, it's six months from when the disaster happened. So that'll actually be clearly put on our website and on the press release as well to make sure that that's clearly identified and that the applications go to the province for approval. That is not approved through us, and also it's for things that were not insured. So it's really clear that way.
No further questions, call the question, all in favor. Carrie, unanimously. And we request the media make sure that they work with our city administration to make sure we, the residents are fully aware of this program that's going out. No introduction to bylaws, no unfinished business. New business discretionary use permit shipping container, city manager?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So we have a report from Jeanine Fletcher, our development officer, in regards to a placement of a second shipping container. So this is a discretionary use permit application, and it was received from Eastway Autobody for replacement of a second shipping container at 7917th Street. So the site is currently zoned within the light industrial. The first shipping container on the site in this area is permitted, and then it's required for approval for a second shipping container at that site. The applicant is proposing to place second shipping container on the north side of the property next to the existing shipping container. So what they're looking for is storage for associated principal use within the repair shop that they have there. So we actually have a drawing here that's shown on the screen to show you where the location of Eastway Autobody is. Here's another picture to show where the lot is. And also a site layout to show where the existing is when the proposed shipping container would be located on the site. So we provided a neighborhood notice, which was sent out to within 75-meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them of the application and opportunity to provide concerns or feedback back to council. Notices were sent out on May 25th, and no comments were received in regards to this. So zoning bylaw 2020-3412, so a light industrial zone is designed to provide a wide range of industrial and service uses requiring small sites and a small amount of outdoor storage, but excluding those which may be offensive by reason of noise, smell, or other forms of pollution. So as stated, the proposed shipping container on the north side of the property next to the existing shipping container, that's where it would be located. Zoning bylaw has a section, regulations regarding shipping containers, which includes requirements that can be in the side or the rear of the yard for the shipping containers, shall be sandblasted and painted to a neutral or complementary color, and they shall not obstruct or reduce exits, windows, parking, or driveways. The proposed addition complies with the requirements for shipping containers in zoning bylaw, and given the industrial nature of the property, zoning a second shipping container is consistent with intent. So council has three options tonight. One is to approve the application without further conditions. Option two is to approve the application with the following conditions. Shipping containers shall be properly anchored and maintained and could repair. Shipping containers shall be sandblasted and painted to a neutral color or complement the colors of the principal building. Shipping containers shall be located a minimum of 1.0 meters from the principal building. Shipping containers shall be used for shipping or storage purposes, accessory to the principal use of the site. Shipping containers shall be kept clean, level, maintained, and placed in an orderly manner. Shipping containers shall not block, obstruct, or reduce exits, windows, parking spaces, or driveways, and shipping containers shall be, or shipping containers are permitted from being plumbed or electrified in any manner. The last option is to refuse, and if it is refused, we have to provide a reason for the refusal with an emotion back. So staff recommendation is the development permit application meets the requirements of zoning bylaw for shipping containers and is consistent with light industrial zone. Therefore, staff are recommending option two to approve discretionary use permit 2022.21 with the conditions listed above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the discretionary use development permit application 2022-021 for a second shipping container at 7917th Street Northeast be approved with the conditions as provided.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Question. And the reason being, again, the first container is $100, the second container, having a second container on the property is $500 because that's the way the bylaw is set up under there. So, and that's just for clarification with that. Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, unanimously. Very good. And that brings us down to the next one. There's two councillors that are going to excuse themselves on the discretionary use application open-air concert by the Waverham Credit Union. So Mr. Jenke and Mr. Richards. City manager, Warren, if you would, please.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So we have the discretionary use permit for temporary use for an open-air concert on June 21st, 2022, at the Spark Center Outdoor Rink. So discretionary use development permit application has been received for an open-air concert at the Spark Center for the 21st of June, hosted by the Waverham Credit Union. The location is to be at the rear of the Spark Center. The area is home to a variety of community recreation and sport facilities, including soccer fields, tennis courts, baseball diamonds, the leisure center, Spark Center, and outdoor rink. The zoning bylaw contains regulations regarding temporary use and separates them into low-impact and high-impact uses with the open-air rock concert and similar attractions being high-impact uses. So Section 5.9.2B of the zoning bylaw requires that open-air concerts and similar attractions shall require a development permit and follow discretionary use process. The Waverham Credit Union are hosting an outdoor concert as part of a community barbecue and family dance. So neighborhood notices were sent out to properties within a 75-meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them of the application and opportunity to provide their concerns or feedback back to council. Once again, no comments or concerns from neighborhood notices haven't received to date. So just up on the board shows the outdoor rink, where the stage would be located, which on the north end of the outdoor rink, with people in the southern part of the rink. We have power access that comes from our Credit Union Spark Center to provide power for their event. And also show the barbecue area, just adjacent on the south end of the outdoor rink. So the outdoor concert is proposed again to take place in outdoor rink to the rear of the Spark Center with a stage located in the north end of the rink. The event again will take place on the 21st, and its proposed start time at 5:00 PM with music act starting at 6:00 PM. The applicants are applying on constant being wrapped up by 9:00, which would comply with required hours as per our noise bylaw. So within the official community plan, the proposed event is consistent with official community plan, and it encourages the use of parks and public spaces to include year-round activities such as annual festivals and special events. Zoning bylaw, Section 5.9, regulates temporary use classifications them into two categories, once again, low-impact and high-impact, so it's high-impact for the open-air concert. Section 5.9.3 provides standards for temporary uses, which requires that high-impact uses meet the following conditions. So have adequate washroom facilities and onsite parking. Required landscaping and parking areas for principal use may not be occupied by the temporary use. Event shall not obstruct pedestrians or vehicular circulation, including vehicular site triangles. Adequate refuse containers shall be made available, and the site must be cleaned. Upon completion, all structures associated material and signage must be removed and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. So with this, there's two options being put forth in front of council. So option one is to approve the request, which is 2022.023, subject to the following conditions. The placement of all structures, including tents, generators, staging, bleachers, et cetera, shall be to the satisfaction of the service department. An inspection from the fire department shall be required upon installation of the tents and associated structures and equipment for the event. Arrangements must be made for access to washroom facilities, which are located within the facility. Arrangements must be made for parking onsite. Adequate refuse containers shall be provided onsite, and site must be kept clean. And upon completion of the event, all structures associated material and signage shall be removed, and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. So option two is to review, refuse the application. Reasons for the refusal would be provided by the person making the motion. So staff has recommended that the proposed, the proposal complies with the requirements for the zoning bylaw in the terms of temporary use requirements, washrooms, refuse, containers, timeframe, et cetera. And then the proposed use is consistent with the intent of the park to be used as community events and uses the area in a large enough to accommodate the event. Therefore, staff has recommended option one to approve discretionary use for the event on June 21st.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the discretionary use development permit application 2022.023 for an open-air concert at the Spark Center Outdoor Rink, 545th Street Northeast, on June the 21st, 2022, be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, call the question, all in favor. Carrie, unanimously. That brings us to inquiries and announcements. That's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. In regards to the SGI safety blitz that was done in town last week, I was wondering if Police Commission could provide council with just a simple overview of what the objective was and if said objective was achieved. I mean, I only ask because I would hate to think that the goodwill that our police department has built with the community would be in any way jeopardized by an event that they really didn't have a lot to do with.
Yes, and I'm fully aware of it, and I am fully in agreement with that, that it was way over onto that, and we're going to, Police Commission will be asking these questions, both the Police Commission and of the government, also to what they're doing.
Excellent. Thank you, your worship.
The, anything else with?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to remind the public that the Waverham Public Library is celebrating its 100th plus two years birthday party on Saturday, so they're inviting everybody to come out between 11:00 and 2:00 o'clock for barbecue and some entertainment, and just have a great time helping to celebrate the birthday and share some memories and enjoy the celebrations.
Which gives us, and Mr. Warrenton, or maybe engineering can talk to us about the 22nd of there, if you would be so kind?
Yeah, absolutely. So on Wednesday, June 22nd, from 3:30 to 6:30, we are having Essential Services Open House at the Public Works Yard, and this will include Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, as well as we have three guest dogs that will be there. But basically, what we're going to do is we're going to set up the major equipment from Public Works. We will have, the Police Department will be there with their police dog, as well as some of their equipment and tactical gear and fleet, as well as the Fire Department will have their trucks out and their dog, Jesse. And then Beaumont, the victim services dog is going to be there as well. And so this is an open house. It is free of charge to anybody in the public that would like to come and see the equipment and kind of get a feel for all the services that these three departments do provide. So that is on Wednesday, June 22nd, from 3:30 to 6:30, and it is a free event, open to everybody.
So two other things that, anything else? Okay, two other things. Number one, that there's just an announcement, the city of Waverham has received a request from the, go ahead, there.
It's the scloderma, the National Scloderma Awareness Month.
Right, and the Scloderma Society of Canada to illuminate the city of Waverham, city hall in blue in recognition of the National Scloderma Awareness Month. Scloderma is a rare chronic disease that affects the immune system, connective tissues, blood vessels, skin, and internal organs, such as the heart, lungs, kidneys, intestinal tract, and esophagus. Scloderma occurs in 1 in 2,500 population and affects women three to four times more often than men, and can also affect children. So on June 18th, city hall will be lit up in blue to recognize National Scloderma Awareness Month in the month in, here in Canada. So that is why we see the blue lights up on city hall. The second item, the city of Waverham has proclaimed June 19th to the 25th as Native Prairie Appreciation Week in Waverham. The representative was not able to be here tonight, so the proclamation was signed on June 8th. This is the 24th Native Prairie Appreciation Week. They have, they've got a lot of different actions going on. They have a youth poster contest, there's a social media pics that they're asking people to put out for Native Prairie appreciation, and also there is a tour at East End, Saskatchewan, which is in the west. Oh, yeah, oh, East End is in the west, but anyway, it's out there. And they said there's very much, how did she explain it, the net, that there's a terrific amount of Native Prairie out there, and they just want awareness as to what the farmers are doing to help conserve all this and be out there. So there's a lot of things. The 30th, we have, let's see, we have the parade on the 30th of June is coming up, so that is marked on the calendar, and then the evening is the young fellows concert. We'll be on to there. Canada Day is on July 1st in the park. Just, I know these things are, we're talking about them in the next council, but just for, so people are ready for them. And then July 7th to the 10th, I believe, is our fair. So we've got a lot of events coming up and a lot of activities coming within the city.
Your worship, the car show is this Saturday, June 18th, 11:00 to probably 4:30 in downtown Waverham. We probably missed it the last couple of years because of COVID, but it's regenerating, coming back, and all those old cars that Jeff Richards used to have are going to be there, so it should be interesting stuff. Also, what I want to do too is kudos to our team at the Works Department that has this new pot-o'-patra. They actually showed me a couple of weeks ago how it actually works, and totally impressed, and they have a lot of work to do, and they are doing good work. They wrote, goes to the wholesale club. They wrote, that goes to the wholesale club, was a disaster until about a week ago, now it's like a, it's driving on a good pavement, it's beautiful. Also to the Parks Department, a tender came through, I knew to do in front of City Hall, where all the bushes that collected weeds and dirt, that's been eliminated, they have rock there now, this should be probably done, whether permitting in a day or two. It's beautiful. They didn't bust any sprinkler heads, to my knowledge, and it looks good because we always talked about that, your worship, to clean it up. Remember in cleanup days, we used it and it took garbage and garbage, no more of that. So it looks very good.
And I see Larry is in our, eggs is in our, there. Larry will be leaving us as our economic, uh, Development Officer to future endeavors. So we would just like to say a thank you to Larry. When's your last day on that?
July first.
July first is his last day and for economic development, and so you did a lot of good work within our city, and we appreciate all, everything that you did. So just a very good congratulations to you on that, and good luck on your future endeavors going forward with that. Other than that, that is about, that's what's going on in the city, and anything else to add? There's no notice of motions, and so we'll, at this point, we'll call for adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.